All right, we'll move on to letter E and energy business. I'm considering authorizing both of Kenny and us to monitor the citizens' ratings.
I would make a motion under that to get AME to monitor the citizens' rating.
Second. All right, your motion's been seconded. Any further discussion?
Can I intervene?
Yes.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Okay, would you?
Well, then my motion is my motion, I would then my motion to authorize AME to monitor and intervene with the citizens' rating. Second.
All right, we've got motions been seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All the opposed say no. Motion denied. All right, everyone does their business.
I'm doing it. Here it goes.
Let's get it done.
First is we're nearly finished. Here is the C. There's still some work to do. Some electrical will done today. Walk in the building now. The lights come on. So, happy birthday, which is nice. Some additional AP still to do and we'll run the graph sometime October version will be done. Station 71 was paved. I think that is, is everything done?
No.
A couple of projects inside in the old porch, but everything else is complete.
Beautiful building. We should all be very proud. I'd go see it. Walk inside and it's nice. X130, I think I sent you all an email. In case they don't know, we had been negotiating with INDO for a number of months. Sent letters to YOBS and INDO got those public repairs involved. I'm happy to announce that a couple of weeks ago, INDO sent us an email stating that they will be funding $1.2 million on this $1.6 million fix for X130, short-term fix, but that's a very good partnership. They stated that we did such a great job of actively going out engineering on them and not complaining and not coming to their office and saying we want, we want, we want. And that was part of the reasoning why they've done what they've done. Very happy to let you know to talk about long-term planning. So, we did get a record for partnership and didn't complain. We found solutions to everybody's troubles. We're very proud of all of this.
Should we carry on with the rest of the hearing?
One thirty-three is in here.
You have the four years?
Yes, but let's not try to, I mean, they now have a major bridge problem on I-65 north and it wasn't in their budget. So, who knows when that's going to affect the funds for the Department transportation.
Do you have any other comments to add or talk about?
Well, no. We had a good conversation with Ziesing's Council President Monday. They have a lot of problems to do. We have the ability to buy them and they don't here in the area. We, you know, Oak Street is part of, it turns into Whitestone Parkway. We understand that. We have the districts out here that have the funding to be able to do things. I think that this will turn out just fine. They passed a resolution jointly with us. We never asked them. I don't think we needed to really, INDO is who we were asking to fund it. Our $400,000 portion is, as I'll tell you in just a moment, will come on this Maple Grove bond. And it will not, it will not put much strain on our recreation on that bond. So, I think all the partnerships still in place just right. And they, Ziesing can do projects that affect our residents farther east. We'll do projects here that affect all of the residents here in this.
Yes, is there, with the timing of the project?
It'll likely go to bid in February and in January, February hopefully be completed. You know, it'll take May, June, next summer. We don't want to start it now. We don't want to start it. All of a sudden can't finish it through the winter and have an absolute disaster. That number one. Number two, any bid late in the year, prices are always a little higher on some projects. Some they are, some they aren't. So, that's where we are with X130. Everything, in my opinion, went down very well.
Good job.
Good work, everybody.
Dan Kesch, John, and Jason Lawson, Steve Under, myself, everybody involved is to be committed. I love to do the, I like parking. Perry Worth really, you can drive it. It's amazing. Really, only thing left to do is some cleanup, some restoration, and then the asphalt path on the north side. And then it'll be, it'll be complete. Duke is building their little access road to their ground. It'll be complete as well. Very nice road. So, I'll talk about the remainder of Perry Worth in a, turn the page in a second. Which I won't turn the page. Maple Grove Bond, another good public loan. Make another combination of that. We issued the Maple Grove Bond. We originally thought we'd get about $2.5 million in project proceeds, net after all the costs. It went to market. Prior to going to market, we did an S and P analysis. It was the very first standard force analysis of the town. And that analysis came back that we're in such a good position financially that we got a double day maintenance rating this year. There are 22 S and P ratings. That's four highs, okay? Very good for our size town and very good for, because of that rating, on the bond with the market last week, it sold and we got a very good rate. Probably one of the best rates I've ever seen. Because of that rating, obviously the cost to issue the bond went down and the net proceeds went up from $2.5 million to $3.24 million, I think. So, we have $700,000 worth of use towards projects because of our good credit rating and our good reputation in the long bond market. So, kudos to everybody involved in that as well. All of you. You've all done enough in the last, you know, the honest financial perception. Past council members, staff members, everybody is to be committed as well. We're proud to be part of the staff and know that we have that. So, out of that, we now have sat down multiple times and I don't think this is for you all. Maybe we need to decide that, I don't know, we want to get through this. But there are potential uses for that bond, okay? We can use it for multiple things. The first use is the X130 interchange, that's $400,000. The second use is that the front, the connector road from Perry Worth to the first roundabout. So, that'd be the second, second final use of the bond. So, that's $400,000 and this is destined to be about $700,000, so we're at 1.1 million. The third potential use, and these are potentials, for these users, is a park one, is the road that would extend what we call a Meyer frontage road. So, the road that goes all the way from the first roundabout in front of my dead ends here, but it's kind of silly that dead ends. It should go all the way through so we can keep, just keep some traffic off of the parkway. If you drive, if you drive US 36 and you don't want to tear every last hair out by the time it does, because there's not enough frontage to keep people off of 36, this would keep people off the parkway. Not a lot. There's not going to be a lot of traffic that uses this, but it will use it. So, this project would extend that road through the municipal parking lot. What it would do is if you look up there, it would create a curb. So, the parking lot would be separated from that road by, we obviously do pedestrian crossing with curb flashers to get people safely across. You go from, I think it's, I forget what, how many parking spaces it goes to. We have like 40 something now, Dan? It goes to like 70? So, you go from 40 something, 49 to 70. If we do this configuration and you add some concrete and you have the ability, there's two thoughts, there's two thoughts here. It really does park a lot. It's expanded. If you look at the parking lot and all the, well, you see people are parking on the grass right now outside. That's a problem. So, this place fills up. People are parking on the grass. If you do this, you also can create a separated farmer's market commons. The farmer's market is becoming very popular. Bloomington has done this with showers commons. It's kind of set, it's part of their municipal complex. They have a road that goes through there as well. It's an actual road. It goes through there between the parking lot and the showers commons or the showers complex. Showers Commons is built for farmer's market. It's covered parking. They love it. The farmer's market vendors love it. We can cover this parking. We can keep it uncovered. The lighting is there. It just depends on what you all, what you all want to do. I think it's a light on project. It takes out the right in, right out. If you saw tonight, the right in, right out was a disaster. People were backed up in the park around 700 tonight trying to get out of a facility. This also takes the right in, right out out of this driveway. So, that's, that right there is, we got estimates of $430,000 from one of the contractors we got us in this.
I'm not sure that all three of them are good. With the development that's coming up, we need insight, the connector road, the first roundabout, I think Crystal Flush or Crystal K or whatever it's called there. Would that not be a development project?
Well, if it were to build to our standards, I would say no. Number one. Number two, that without that, I think you missed out on attracting the nearly $80 to $100 million in retail to that particular site. So, I guess you could call it. You could tell the developer to do it. It'll have to.
It'll have to, but do our standards anything?
They, they do.
So, the standards thing is either way?
It does. You're correct.
Sorry.
Why not make that like a T or something?
Make it a what?
Like a T, it'll almost be very worthless. It's traffic.
Because I'm not a traffic engineer and I don't know the words of the sentence. And they want to just point it out. Unaffordably.
It almost looks like that.
I think John, that both of those roads, what was the third one? But the Perry Worth to the roundabout, this town hall, both will benefit development. Don't really split it with the development.
No, you may lose out on the development. I mean, you set up the tip.
That's what I said. I haven't been honest. We haven't lost that yet, so I'm sorry. It's just vice versa. I just asked. I mean, that bond has been there forever because there's no real connection or somebody really wants that bond to sell that. Developers already put a lot into the years.
And they have and they're still underwater. And so, we have a strength. What I didn't say about this tip, after this bond, we still have for the first time, the redevelopment commission will be cashing $250,000 each year in excess tax income revenue. Now, we can pass it on. Likely to do more projects in this area.
I'd like to see swot analysis of, I think, the ranking pieces in order of importance to staff things so that we can see.
I'm giving those to you now. We've gone over this so much.
But your first one is this?
Oh, my gosh. We have.
But your first one is this?
No, first one's the interchange. First one's the interchange.
Your interchange, right?
Now, one we haven't talked about is the roundabout.
Well, that would be my next question, which we have discussed before.
We have. You authorize a roundabout, this?
The roundabout, which one?
Indianapolis Road and Whitestone Park. You authorize a roundabout, then you deauthorize a roundabout after we said there's too much strain on the NPH budget, which it is a low strain on the NPH budget. Now, we can take a lot of that money out of this bond and build a roundabout that very quite possibly the INDO is going to come in five years and say, we're going to tear your interchange out. Because you're going to become bigger, we're going to have to tear your roundabout out. So, we walk us through the priority list in order. If you don't have the roundabout in there, the priority list would be X130. This connector road because of the economic development impact. The third would be this, also because of the economic development impact and a function for the community, which is to build this lot, which makes it more than just a more in the park lot, it's also a farmer's market commons. And then the medias, which are minimal cost. I mean, this is minimal, okay? We're talking $300,000. You know, it's, it's, if it was done, you have a beautiful, you know, you have a green line, landscape median all the way down the parkway that told you that you were in Whitestown. It needs to be now also for safety reasons. So, people aren't crossing the parkway. So, it's kind of a lower priority. It's lower priority, but it's a small amount of budget. So, it kind of goes up with, you know, it can be done almost whenever.
What are the price tags?
This is about $300,000.
What, the median?
Mm-hmm.
If I was to put a purpose on it, I think the median is.
Did we get the prices first?
One, right now we have one quote for $1.40. We have one for size $300,000. That's an engineer. That's what we all know what they do. What we love. So, we have an actual quote from a contractor and said they can do this for $130,000. 700 is the estimate, is the engineer's estimate right there.
That's for the first roundabout, okay?
Yes. $400,000 for the interchange. So, I think we've only used how much? What did I just say? What's that? $1,540,000?
Yeah.
So, out of 3.24 million, we got a lot. And another thing that we proposed is a, and this is also minimal cost. Another thing that's been proposed is the resurfacing of Perry Worth from the new connection to Anson. Probably going to be about $300,000. And then trails, a trail all the way down West Town Parkway, all the way to West Taylor. From the new Perry Worth connection all the way down the parkway to West Taylor. Trail down Central Boulevard, trail down Main Street all the way to middle school. It's about as far as we can get a trail down Main Street without having to start a bike ride away, going to the cemetery, getting across the bridge. And it becomes very costly. We can do all of that in a right way and then, we don't, I think the estimate on that, I don't know if we have yet. We have the estimates, basically, we have the estimates on the tread systems down the parkway.
$400,000.
$400,000 of all that.
And does it connect now town?
It's, if you want a trail to connect to downtown, we're going to have to do the bond. Because we're at a right way.
So, everything that we're talking about right now is all within our jurisdiction?
Well, it is because this tip has to be benefiting the service industry.
The roads were mentioned. I just want to make sure.
Yes, Perry Worth. Now, you could say that a trail to downtown benefits the service industry. Certainly justify that, but once you get past the county bridge at 525, we're going to get to some pretty costly dollars to build that trail. And we're going to buy some right away.
Was the harvest apartment required to give us some land?
Harvest apartment has set aside some land for a trail. Then you got to get in front of the Giles. You got to get in front of the, some other landowners. You got to go across the ridge, which is, oh, my gosh, that's, you got a cemetery there. People are going to have to walk on the road there. Yeah, cemetery and a bridge. It's not built for pedestrians.
That's a great interchange. So, you're basically doing just shy.
You're going to do that basically. But remember, there's already a trail from just about the Meyer gas station to just the Eagle's Nest property. But you're not building a lot of that trail there.
So, that's, so we're at 2.2?
So, we're at 2.2. Now, we have a million.
To buy ground and build the rest of the sidewalk on Main Street except for the operation cemetery.
Or you can put it all towards the roundabout that you've already specified that you're in, and build a road around. Well, our total match is one point with engineering costs.
This is Indianapolis Road to the Fiddos to the south.
This is the MPO grant.
The MPO grant, so they're going to have the track.
Yeah, the, give me a rundown. Engineering is $432,000. Rideaway was about 800,000. And construction, which you had to match, $560,000. About 1.7 million is a match. You've only spent at this point about half the engineering, maybe a little more. The right away, you know, at 700 or 800,000, that may get donated. So, you may not spend that. And then the construction, the $560,000 of construction will not need to be spent until 2016 and 2017. And then what MPO is giving you, I think, was 2.3.
They're giving us 2.3. We need to add 1.7.
Yep.
So, the total project is $400,000. What, I'm sorry. I know we have talked about this before, but it's been a while. What problem are we solving with that? Have you ever gone west?
The turning movements, as you come off that truck stop are just horrible. And the long lead times, as you're going west on West Town Parkway, you get trucks turning southbound, going southbound. Indianapolis Road turning east into the interstate. And the long turning movement, it's often, it's making people sit in that. It's going to back up into the interstate. And then, so that's the biggest thing, is the, just the timing and all the, and the traffic is just going to get worse. You've got developments that's going on to the west of that intersection. So, it's just going to get worse.
How many more levels are going in the addition of next Eagles? That's?
Three.
Three.
So, that is, we're already at 700, then the 300?
Yeah.
And Traders Point is, it's daily. It's not just Sunday?
Yeah, it's every day. It's a school every day plus Sunday.
Not only, not only, I think.
Yeah, both of it's 500 hours.
So, you have those main levels on the west side of the interchange, you know what we're from. So, that, that should concern about the working this back act and the anticipation of the further to the west.
I, I think the design is fine. And if INDO had to do that, obviously, they'd have to do so many endorsement tasks. Not necessarily concerned about the money. It's just, does it fit into their plan with their interchange? So.
With the interchange, with those, they may last a little longer on the main gate list?
Let's say the interchange isn't going to get done in 10 years. So, it's not on the tenure list now. Development may cause it to be moved out on the tenure list. So, yeah, we've also talked about a trail from Eagles Nest. If we have a priority trail, it's probably down West Town Parkway from Eagles Nest to Whitestone. Now, the issue about the Eagles Nest trail is that you get people across the bridge safely, but at least they only have that mile of trail. We have estimates of about $450,000 for that. We could do that. Or they're going to go to the end of Traders Point and either decide to take their life on their own hands by crossing the interstate bridge to hit our trail on the other side on Whitestone Parkway. Or they can turn around and go back.
So, how, how is that, Eric, regarding the, the trail from original Whitestown down to here where people can go shopping?
It's, I didn't say it was. Here's, here's the other issue with the trail now. We're, we're talking about completely reconstructing Main Street within the next three to seven years. When you do that, you're going to tear that trail you just built out because you're going to, you're going to widen the parkway. And that trail's going to be torn out. So, the trail you built is going to have to be rebuilt again. Now, if you all decide that Main Street's going to last another 10 years, great, it's a whole trailer. If not, anticipate building a trail to Legacy Core to Anson and then tearing that trail back out when you do the Main Street reconstruction project. That's, that's the issue.
I don't see why Main Street has to be wide. And if you built a trail and people were walking and riding bikes, you wouldn't. I don't, I'm not a traffic engineer in there, but I don't see why we would do wide, to me. And this is me speaking from my place of residence and my neighbors. It's a, I would much rather see a sidewalk there than a widearm road.
There's going to be a lot of traffic engineers. I've looked at all of our transit transportation plan that you all adopted, the reconstruction of Main Street. There's going to be a lot of traffic on Main Street. There already is. Now, super two, what does that do? I guess a longer discussion. If you'd like to, if you'd like us to get quotes and ideas and estimates on what it would cost to build a trail from Legacy Core to the Anson area, then I'm all for that. I love the trail systems. It counts toward the Hafner's left side. You can then use Park Empathies for the things.
Is there a way to keep, like, water farms? I mean, I know we still have to go across the bridge, but to avoid a cemetery, can you go along the water?
No, the great stones. Once you get up to the corner of 500, you got three gravestones, which you'll have to do Section 106 on. You'll have to move those. It gets very costly. You'll have to buy that a little bit of that ground, you know? There's the dishes. It's probably more likely to happen on the east side of Main Street than it is on the west side. So, you have to get people across when you're busy Main Street or one of those intersections. It's, you know.
I forgot about the three gravestones.
The three gravestones, that's very conversational for widening Main Street. That would be, we still have to do probably Section 106, so maybe even widen Main Street.
It's my understanding that people live in that house. I think it makes you worry about it.
It's the schooler kids. Yeah, but Todd, she loved that project. She fell in love with that project. We know all about them.
Well, Eric, Eric, a big point about the redevelopment development, if you do the extension road from the first roundabout to Perry Worth, you have the same potential going west with that roundabout as you do, once you open that up already, you know you have one housing division, you have the PEB, and a lot of that happening there is out. With the various properties, you have a lot. Yeah, that includes a level four section that's all within that development stage. Watersewer, the various property all the way up to 475. The PEB for the golf course plus what's going in in Tempest area. So, you're talking about the benefits to the business development, commercial development, this project and then the roundabout would honestly leave that to second.
Yes, if you want to prioritize, I won't be giving you the rare to the roundabout in there. I would give you the interchange next first, the roundabouts second, this drive third. A trail down Main Street, if you want us to look at the numbers. I think they're going to be a lot higher than you think, but we can look at that. And the median, but the median kind of falls in this 1A. It's, it's a, it's a minimal project that is built for safety, for aesthetics, for landing out if people, if they choose to come across the, the West Town Parkway. It's kind of one in the 1A. One would be enter the interstate. 1A would be the median down West Town Parkway. It's kind of a part of the interstate interchange project. Two would be the roundabout. Three would be this, this connector road. Four would be the parking lot, which is also, I mean, 140,000. It's a minimal cost.
That kind of is regular.
That's kind of 1C.
Yeah, and those three kind of all go together.
They do. Yes, we're all tied together as one project. And then trail system, which either connect to Legacy Core to Anson, which I think is a great idea.
I'd probably like to request any guidance on that.
It's going to be, you're going to be shouting.
And the harvest park is supposed to be building this sidewalk in front of there and there.
Yes, but very small, very small stuff. Well, we'll get, we'll get prices. And then trail systems, it becomes a trail system game at that point. One down the parkway that's there. Could we do that out of our regular NPH budget in the Park Empathies? We could. The MPH budget's going to be strained for the next five years based on the page reading extended history of this conversation.
I hate to put this down, but it's just incredible. And I'm convinced that we need to improve. So, I don't think that Main Street has to be kind of, made it flying.
I could call it, I guess, but it's going to.
Well, but even, there's also terrain issues. So, that is going to require some of that. There's a fish, there you have to go across.
It'd go across the creek and it'd go across Fish Bag.
To end this meeting.
That will be expensive.
Yes. So, let's, let's see the numbers.
I'd say, I'll say it's probably going to be upwards of a million.
Could we shoot one in and signalize Indianapolis and Whitestown Parkway versus doing roundabout and achieving laws with that? Picture that, are you sure?
Well, yes.
No.
Temporary.
It'll make turn rates. It'll just make it better.
Interchange return.
And also, the traffic, that would probably cause even more chaos with the seminars.
It's been a quarter of a mile on the interstate and INDO allow. I mean, you'd like to put a quarter of a mile on the interstate.
Yeah, Perry Worth is a little bit farther from the interstate, than the interstate. Here are the things that you need to consider with the roundabout. We tell the MPO, "Thanks for your money. We want your money." But they're also saying that we want $1.8 million of your money. Now, if we have the majority of that bond issued, then let's, let's put strain on the NPH. We didn't have that bond issue. I would look at all of you and say, there is no way this is a priority. All of our road projects is going to take that much strain, that much money out of our underfunded NPH budget. Now, we have this bond issue. Now we have this bond issue, we can take some of that money and move it towards the roundabout and keep the MPO money, which makes them happy. Now, do we wouldn't just want to do a project just to make the MPO happy? No, we want to do a project for some of the best interested citizens. But those Eagles Nest residents and Westmore Homes residents and Traders Point, they're probably going to be much, much happier with the free flow movements in the roundabout than they are. The headaches they're going to arise because we didn't do it done.
We've also got new development going on Indianapolis Road, north of Indianapolis Park, which is going to be coming south as well. And then traffic is down to flow, those are big likes distribution centers as well. It's just going to continue to stack.
All problems will be answered by five hundred homes in, plus one multi-brand.
Ensign region.
If you're walking away, the MPO offers you, that's very typical, if you walk away from an MPO.
What message can you send?
It's the message that we went through all these groups and MPOs jump, they jump a little tightly, that's not horrible. They jump a little tightly on turn credits down, that we went through lots to get to go to this.
Here's the other thing, man, you spent two hundred and fifty thousand dollars managing area fees already.
Well, did you not say that there's going to be some revenues coming in from this bond?
Yes, and, and actually.
That eventually could be used.
In excess of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars per year of the life of the bond, or the life of the, not the bond, the TIF revenues coming into the TIF district are two hundred and fifty.
So those funds can be used to do, like sections of the interstate to be missed at town.
That could be, the redevelopment commission could certainly use those funds to continue the trail processes to work with Nathan on parking and back fees to those trails as well. Yes, there, there could be future connections of the trail.
So we're not walking away from what we're just doing in stages as we acquire land and land is generated or development comes in and allows us to start to back it in. Kind of like what we're doing with the Harriet's Trail right now, we're building our section if people connect.
Yes, I know, I would say as a town manager, we need to get that trail on Main Street, people need to have, you know, they have access from Legacy Core to Walker Farms by walking and banking. That should be a top priority from a trail system perspective. Another top priority in my opinion, all that stops at, at the parkway is the trail down Indianapolis Road to Eagles Nest. At least gives a recreational trail, because right now they have nothing.
But that's why we have parking batteries.
Parking batteries could be used, there's also other M B A's funds that can be used on that, that trail can be funded with as well.
But the whole thing we talked about with the parking batteries was that was a favor to be used for.
That, that.
And the trails, it has its.
We can use those all the trails, certain percentages you can use with certain things.
Right. And that's legal.
These are things that you, as we close on this bond, we need to understand what the uses are, and town staff needs to know. I think you need to tell us what the priority projects are going to go forward with. I think we've given you a good idea of what those are, and I think all four of those, if I, if we do the numbers again, they still fall within three point two. So I think, I think if we're, if we're supportive of Indianapolis Road roundabout, we ought to make a motion, show. Thank you.
So if you don't, we're going to take the money? Because we don't have to do it until sixteen, seventeen?
No, we, we need.
Well, we need to know now, but we don't have to go through all this cost until twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen.
We don't know what the bond documents say, typically, I think you have three years to, to close a bond out. And even if you didn't do it within three years, you could take that money, appropriate it to a fund from the bank, from the bond bank, so from the bank it's a new bond. So first specific project.
One point seven for the roundabout, seven hundred thousand for the connector.
Well, that's, two, two hundred and thirty-five thousand's already been paid for, so one point five for the.
So let me just read through, you said that, to make sure I have that right, the first priority is the interchange, the interchange.
Not, not, yes, first priority is the four hundred thousand. Because we made a partnership with them, not to get it done.
With, with that comes the parking lot and the medians. Yes, and those are aiming, then the.
So that'd be four hundred, three hundred and one.
That is, and two is the roundabout, and three is connector road on Perry Worth to the roundabout. What I have, and then four was trails.
Yes, you are restricted on putting the median in and felt that connector road is.
That's fair.
Correct.
Well, and in front of, in, three hundred thousand doesn't include that section of Main Street, we're leaving that out because of that restriction.
You brought up with your moment, development, maybe shooting that connector road. I don't have that top, I don't know where any of that priority.
If it wasn't.
No, I, I thought the, the.
Can, wait, you can't put the medians in until the connector is done?
Well, a section.
A section. No, the airtime begins from on this part of the road, right?
Well, from the interchange to the Perry Worth intersection, which keeps people from turning left to the barathon, which is a problem right now. And then, when there's a section that's keen to be built, per green, it's because the coolers want the donation of the land from Perry Worth, until the connector is completed, and then, so then the continuation of the median from Main Street to seven hundred, okay? And it was, like I said, it was two, three hundred thousand dollar cost for that.
But if we're talking about retail development, like Eric said, if this is a priority to open this corner and allow more development, more homes, more retail, more hotels, restaurants that serve food, sorry, kind of limited on our situation. Plus the development that could come west, they all go together. So if it's possible to make all those fit within bonds, based on the numbers given us. I was, Eric, I would agree with what was.
You can do, you can do, if you do the roundabout, the interchange, the Meyer frontage road, the connector to the roundabout, and the median, you are at three million dollars, you have three million forty thousand. You have roughly two hundred thousand dollars left to put into some sort of trail system.
Why don't we make sure those numbers come in and sell them before we get rid of our thinking? Two hundred thousand's not much, you can't even, if you're talking about the former main road.
Thank you.
I mean, there's no reason to say, let's spend it all.